Maybe we ought to reach out to Elizabeth PD and see if this is something that they'd be interested into.
I can try.
It'd be, I mean, in terms of logistics and everything else, it's very similar. In terms of the population difference, it's very similar. So I guess that was something, after I got done talking to that guy, I'm like, huh, I'm gonna take this and throw it out there that maybe this is something, because I'll tell you, there's three things that are out of control in this town. And the truck traffic coming in on Cabo Bennett, the truck and car traffic going east and west through this town, in the school zone. And I guess there's a fourth one, I'm trying to locate a concrete planter box, and I'm gonna put it on Ute Avenue by the stop sign, because there's no way that that is a double turn. And we have another accident at that intersection, because they're trying to create it to be a double turn. We need to do something to kind of deter that. So I reached out to get a four-foot by four-foot precast planter box right there to try to discourage the use of those. That's all I got.
That's good points, Trevor, you hit them all four on the head. We could borrow one of those big rocks down there by that business down the hill and stick in that lane. Anybody else have anything? Ruth, do you have anything?
We're muted. Not right now.
Really?
Our last cop plan working house will in person be on twenty-seven at five thirty. So as much participation as possible, which is great, so that they can really gain a good picture of where.
I can hardly hear you. Kim, I can hear everyone else but you.
They need as much participation as possible, so that they can be the full picture of what this community is looking for, future-wise. We learned, I learned a lot going through the schools process, master plan process, that what the people sit at that table want is not necessarily what this community wants. And that was a big idea, because you think you have a thumb on what the community is looking at and what they want, you really don't. You're focusing on what literally you want. And that's not what we set, it's just reserved community, so. So they're asking for as much participation as possible, so if you guys can get the word out there. County is sharing it on our social media and on our website. We've got it on our website and our social media, but a lot's gonna be word of mouth, participation, so we need your help. And then they're gonna do a final virtual meeting. Really, what that'll be is not so much community participation in offering what they want. We'll be without one person, but this is gonna be an overall presentation of the entire project. And then Minnesota Court. We have secured, I'm gonna say Judge from Elizabeth, this can be Judge Walken, and a town and a court clerk. So right now, we're looking at possibly starting in March, we need to make sure that our code is absolutely up to date with regard to everything that Judge needs to conduct and issue court. And it's not really for the money, it's for purpose. We're still trying to find a prosecutor when one is needed. A prosecutor is not gonna be there for every six or four weeks. No, this is just gonna maybe be one or two that takes fifteen minutes, and we're done. We don't, I don't say we, we say we. They don't wanna create a problem that's overbearing or intimidating, and they feel that having a prosecutor there will create that kind of environment in our town, especially when there's not any need for a prosecutor. They will need one in three particular instances, and those are very serious cases that hopefully we never find ourselves needing a judge for our trial, so. Everything should be easy peasy according to that. So you say they, you just, I'm talking about the judge, code enforcement, they are suggesting? Yeah, so I was in communication with one prosecutor, and they wanted to be completely involved in every single thing, we charge an outrageous amount, and we were able to work with the judge together. And if I have a judge telling me that we're not needed in every single theory, every single instance does not require a prosecutor sitting in the chair or filed, a motion's not gonna have to be filed in every single one by a prosecutor. Suzie and Ruth can converse, and they can create the motions if they need motions, and they can file motions themselves. It doesn't have to be a prosecutor. So there's no sense in expending that kind of cost for something that we don't need. So we're still looking for a prosecutor, yes ma'am?
You said that possibly doing this start in March?
Possibly start in March and every other month.
Are we gonna have our code in place by that point?
Ruth's reviewing it, we shouldn't have any real changes to it. All she's reviewing is what the judge is going to be looking at. Code violations, what Suzie's already trying to enforce. He just wants to make sure the language is absolutely solid.
Have we established fees though yet?
No, we're working on that as well, so we'll probably bring a fee schedule to it. And really talking to Suzie this week, the likelihood of starting in March is not solid, because there's things we have to consider and motions. They have to draw up all these motions custom to our town.
Sure.
And Suzie has to get a violation book that allows her to write them into a court that she doesn't have right now. So there's a lot of things that still have to be put in place. They're being proactive and saying that maybe we could start in March, but that's still on the table.
Now, what about my court clerks?
We do have a clerk secured, so we have a court clerk and a judge. The only thing that we're working with is a prosecutor, and the judge and Suzie both suggested that that could be something that we don't need to actively search for until we need one. Those are very extenuating circumstances where a prosecutor would need to be brought in.
There, since we haven't had this before or any time recently, is there any need to like inform the public, like, hey, just so you know, this is what's gonna be put in place from here on out?
No, because they've already been, this is why we're putting it in place, is because they've been threatened with it, threatened with it. And it's become, they've become complacent to it, because you know, it's like, you can threaten so many times, and then they're like, no, you're not gonna do anything. And that's really the only circumstances we have, and there's really only four or five of them right now. So we're not, and that's what I tried to explain to that prosecutor. And his stance is, he's very young, and his stance is, once the word gets out, you're gonna have a whole bunch of cases. Well, the judge has done this for forty-four years, and the code enforcement person has done this for over forty years. Once they start seeing that, no, we mean business now, there is gonna be a court put in place, and you are gonna have to answer for it, and there may be fines, then they're gonna fall in line more so than wanna go out and violate, you know, more, it just didn't make sense. His reasoning didn't make sense, so.
I think that, I like what Eric said in his meeting, that we should inform the community of the direction we're moving.
Oh, we definitely can, yeah.
I mean, just like, you know, go ride Bailey a ticket and charge her a thousand dollars just because, I mean, you know what I mean?
I do.
If they know that we're moving that way, then maybe we'll never have to have court, because they'll start cleaning up their crap and moving their junk cars and.
And just so you're aware, how this court would end up working, it is not one of those circumstances where, okay, you violated, this is your fee and/or your fine, and they're gonna have to pay it. What is gonna end up happening is they're gonna get a violation. This, and the violation will state what that fine would be for that violation. They're gonna end up in front of that judge, if that's how they choose to handle that, and that judge will defer that fine. He's gonna defer that fine and put back over on them, I'm, your fine is a thousand dollars, I'm gonna defer it. If you do what you're supposed to do within the next thirty days, and come back and prove to me you've done it in the next thirty days, then you don't have to pay anything. So it's not gonna be an automatic fee and people paying immediately.
Well, it's always good to be open to the community and let them know what we're thinking about.
And I think when we inform them, there needs to be a list of court costs are going to be.
And that's what the fee schedule, we have to have that. He cannot conduct court without it. Yeah, he cannot conduct court without that, and he's requiring that, so we have to have that in place before he'll have court.
I just meant with like informing the public, like I think it should go out as one letter, hey, this is the way we're moving, just so you're aware, violations, court costs are minimum.
We don't have an address for everybody in this town, and I don't have a mailing list, so we'll put it on the website, and that's the best we can do.
Yeah, and I mean, at least at that point, if somebody contacts the town, you can be like, actually, it's your place. And when I talked to Suzie about this, she kinda explained to me that it would be like up to a judge's discretion, but us as a board can tell the judge, like, hey, this person has been in violation every single time that we've done codes, and this has been ongoing for five years, we don't want them to get off with like nothing. Not that we would know, like exactly the addresses or anything, but if it's a continuous thing, we can make a suggestion to the judge is the way that she kind of like told.
Well, that wouldn't be on the part of the board.
Right, yeah.
It might not be on the part of the board, because the board is not involved in operations or enforcement.
Right, but she said something along the lines of like, that we can suggest something, like, you know, if they're over, something like that.
So Ruth and I, I do, and I think what you're, it's not a foreign subject, I think it's a subject that Ruth and I and Suzie have already had already, because we already have some in mind that we know may end up being problems. So those discussions have already been had, there's been lots of discussions with those people. So the point where we're at right now with them is a court situation.
Right.
So there's already a direction I feel that that judge would take, taking those into consideration. Does that make sense? Is that what you're talking about?
And I mean, maybe I got her wrong by saying, is there something that us as a board can suggest to the judge? Is that right?
No.
Okay, so then, so then we can just have our schedule, like our fee schedule?
So we can approve a fee schedule, I could put a fee schedule together, I would work with Suzie on that and Ruth on that, and you guys could look at that fee schedule, and you can approve that fee schedule, but you have no involvement in the court, the enforcement, or any of that.
But as far as like if we say, like we can, can we say something as in like if you have X amount of violations, we would want the judge to say?
No, you cannot give the judge direction, it is strictly on him.
So it's just our fee schedule?
And I think as court coming in as a new thing, I think everybody kind of has to start with a clean slate, I think that's kind of all that's fair.
No, it's not, no, because a lot of them are.
The reason that we're bringing a court.
Yeah, there's all, like I said, there's four or five are the reason that we're having to institute the court, and they've gotten to such a grievance that we don't have any other way to bring them compliant. And some of, and so you know, he's not just looking at code enforcement, weeds or things like that. Like, if you're operating a business and you don't have a business license, he can absolutely get involved in that. If you are, you haven't come to the town and saw that you're operating a business on a piece of property that you haven't done a zoning change to that allows you to operate a business, or judge could get involved in that too. So he gives us a much broader range of enforcement that we didn't necessarily have before, and it's not just Suzie completely related. Does that make sense? Okay. So, yeah, if I think of it, but that's just, that's the gist of it right now. And if you were to get involved in code enforcement, your role in code enforcement solely is as a citizen. So if you have an issue with somebody else in town, code enforcement-wise, my suggestion, Suzie's suggestion, and probably Ruth's suggestion too, would be to email Suzie, get on the website, use the link that we have to make an anonymous report to Suzie, if that's the route you wanna go. But anything you do, code enforcement-wise, would have to be as a citizen of this town, not as a board member.
Okay.
Yeah, other than approving the fee schedule.
Okay, maybe, maybe that's what I, it was a while ago that I talked to Suzie, so maybe that's what I'm thinking of. Maybe you can cross that when it gets cool.
Anything else? Public quirks?
Nothing other than the blade has finally been picked up, we're done with that blade.
And we pay them our code and all that stuff.
Yeah, I know.
You've got anything else from code enforcement?
No, not till April, so I have a report.
Okay. Moving on, approval of the minutes from the January ninth, twenty twenty-four meeting, so we have a motion to approve.
One second.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. And that, Kimberly. Expenditures, you're a date. You're packing, everyone had a chance to fruit through them. The huge changes in that, Kimberly?
No. You're, I sent you guys an email, you have more updated financials than what I sent you on Thursday. I ran it, I posted some more checks in there, you had some sales tax hit, so now you have more updated financials than you had last Thursday.
Okay. Did entertain a motion to approve? We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion?
At any point, are we gonna give Ruth's invoices? I mean, I see legal fees, thirty-five hundred.
We did that last, when you weren't here, last meeting.
I just wanted to see it at any, I never saw it.
We're not, we don't send them out, we have an executive session, and everybody review them.
Yeah, I went through before I signed the check, so if you wanna.
Yeah, Trevor and, well, the check signers will review those invoices monthly at those meetings, and I have them initialized now before I pay them.
Yeah, all those in paper signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Okay, a motion to go out of our regular scheduled meeting? We have a motion, do we have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion to open public hearings?
We just need to go out.
For me?
We don't need to do a motion for every single one of them, we're just going in at seven twenty-two.
In public hearings. Special event liquor licenses. Jeff Barry Benefit, anybody here for that? Jill? This is Jill Miller, the greatest track coach ever to adorn the halls, and a business owner and a wonderful person.
Hi, Joe.
Good to see you, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, tell us what you got.
Okay, I have a young man who works for me at the feed store, he's been with me for three years. He was driving home one night after work, and he was going down seventeen, and he went, that's my dad's truck. His dad was in the truck with a broken neck, spinal injury, he's paralyzed from the neck down. So obviously, he's at Craig Hospital right now. We want to help the family raise funds to renovate the bathroom specifically, and then the hallway, so his wheelchair can get, they don't have, we don't have to worry about a ramp, they have a ranch style house, and so the lift is about that big. And Craig said, Craig Hospital said, you don't need to worry about that, you can just lay any kind of rubber mat over it, and the wheelchair will, he has a low and zip wheelchair. At least that's what he's been using down there to get himself around. But, so I decided that I would organize this, and it's a week from Saturday at the exhibit building. We're gonna do a silent auction, oh, here, sorry. You two can share. You two can share. You two can share. And you can have. So at the bottom, it tells you how we're, it's gonna start at one o'clock in the exhibit building with silent auction opening at that point. Understanding that not everybody can come to dinner in the live auction, or, you know, if somebody has other things going that night, we still want people to come in and help support him. So you can see the schedule of events. We're gonna have music playing in the background, and I contacted the Kiowa Bar, and Audrey Hacker, who's their manager, who is tips certified, is going to be coming. If you approve, serve alcohol. And Rick knows, I don't drink, so this is all really foreign to me, but I've been to enough auctions to understand that if people are a little bit warmed up, they'll bid higher, and that's my goal. So Buddy Strong's gonna be the auctioneer. Audrey said she's going to Everest Fans, so that people will not be served if they're not of age. And I told her, because I'm, because it's all foreign language to me, I said, do what you normally do. And so she told me she'd have a red wine, a white wine, two beers that are the most popular in Albert County, and obviously she knows, because, and then whatever they call the top row.
Top shelf.
Top shelf, and top shelf. And so I'm just asking for permission for that to be allowed. I did all my paperwork in the county, agreed, when that happened. I've already posted the one sign that you gave me over there in, at the fairgrounds, to let people know. And if anybody wants to go to an avalanche game, assuming that they're gonna get better again, there's two tickets. Please somebody don't leave.
It's a fun night.
Okay, any questions? We're gonna make sure that we keep track of underage that are there. Perfect. Yeah. Okay, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion, do we have a second?
Wait, we gotta wait.
So you have to, okay.
Okay, thank you, Jill. We'll get after this here when we get done with our public hearing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, the KPTCC.
Cabo County Community Club.
Let's get it, pretend that. Hello. So we're doing Casino Night, just like they did last year. KPTCC is hosting it, it's a twenty-one and up, so we won't do wristbands, but we'll ID everyone at the door. So we'll start right around five, and we should end right before midnight. And it's just Casino Night, I know there was a couple of you that came last year, did you go?
No.
You did.
She came to the horseshoe tournament.
I did horseshoe. Yes.
It was fun.
Questions?
Who's in charge of alcohol?
Me and JR.
You and JR.
Serving, I will be doing, JR is tips certified.
How are we identifying underage?
They're not allowed at the event at all, it's a twenty-one and up.
They have a card at the door, yeah.
Yeah, so if they're not twenty-one, they can't come in.
Cool.
That's probably why.
That makes it a lot easier.
So we're in your ID.
They're not letting you in.
Get it in.
Yeah, well, it doesn't matter, I don't drink anyway, so.
But you can't even get in the door unless you're twenty-one.
Okay. And you're gonna do that the twenty-third coming up in March?
Yeah. Then horseshoes. Yes, so then we'll do our horseshoe tournament for high school basketball, that'll be July twentieth. We'll probably start around noon and end around eleven o'clock, just like we did last year. That one, kids are allowed, we will have wristbands, they will be IDed, and again, JR will serve, I will do cash box.
Same to tips, what are they, tips?
Tips certified. Through the state.
Are you tips certified?
I'm not. They are, I can't, they are. Bailey will have us. I've got two tips certified, and I'm just doing cash.
Okay. Long as we're all legal. Okay, so we got horseshoes on the twentieth and Casino Night on the twenty-third.
Yes.
Okie doke. Thank you, anything else you need to share with us? Okay. All right, I entertain a motion to go back into our regular scheduled meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Okay, page two. Yeah, I didn't have anyone sign up on my public comment.
So now that we're in a public hearing, or out of public hearing, I'd like to make a motion that we approve all three liquor licenses that we presented to some public.
Okay, we have a motion in two seconds.
I heard Terry first.
Any discussion? And Jill? That's, that's a great thing you're gonna, you know, family's gonna need some help, so. Hey, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, you have your licenses. As soon as I sign. Make sure I get the right one here. That one, this one.
You gotta sign all of them.
Sign all three.
You have to sign all three.
Jill?
Get Jill so she can get them. Here, you need a copy. Did you make a copy of this?
I will, just.
Thanks.
Ever just a second.
Is this three oh three, two four, three, one?
Seven, seven, two.
Is that a good number to contact you if we have some other donations?
Yes.
Okay.
That's my girl. Can we, so maybe the store member, people can drop off that to store as well.
Okay, whichever's easiest.
Either one. I mean, yeah. It will find its way to my spare bedroom.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, can we, can we stop by the feed store and donate?
During hours, after. During the, no, that was after.
That, that number?
No, drop off that.
During hours.
During hours.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Yeah, you don't have to say.
No, it's not.
No.
Don't listen to them.
You don't wanna hang out for the ride.
I thought that's what you said.
Yeah.
Can.
Okay. All right, Tammy is going to join our board, and so Kimberly is going to.
Did you just sign me to the, she's a clerk.
So get the clerk guy, where'd you go?
She's doing another duty. Danielle, so Danielle could go back to her back.
Good, when she gets back, we'll get you all their office.
She's coming. She does make a copy of the report. There you go.
Sasha, keep it.
Sasha.
Yes.
Do you have a band?
Tammy, or?
Hold on.
A band for the horseshoe.
Okay.
Make her stand up front and everything.
W.
Oh, man.
W. I think it's actually three different ones. I think we're named five, so. W, W, M, and, um, Kenny.
Dale's going really down.
All right, come on down, Dale.
All right.
Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, ready?
Ready.
All right, raise your right hand. I state your name.
Tammy Hart.
I, Tammy Hart. Do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the laws of the State of Colorado, and the laws of the State of Colorado. The Town of Kiowa Home Rule Charter, the Town of Kiowa Home Rule Charter, all town ordinances.
All town ordinances.
Standards of conduct.
Standards of conduct.
And Business Code of Ethics.
And Business Code of Ethics.
And that I will faithfully, and that I will faithfully, and impartially perform and discharge.
And impartially perform and discharge.
The duties of the Office of Board of Trustees, the duties of the Office of Board of Trustees, according to the laws.
According to the law.
And the best of my ability, to the best of my doing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I will make a copy of your thing. Thank you.
There you go. Make sure you put her on the front page, John.
Don't think you heard you.
John, front page?
Well, I've told you before. If I make the decisions, that newspaper.
There you go.
Where's, what, newspaper?
Okay, congratulations, Tammy, and welcome.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, new business ordinance one, series twenty twenty-four, an ordinance of the Town of Kiowa establishing an amendment to the Colorado Municipal, Municipal Code Regarding Municipal Campaign Finance Complaints.
Yeah, this is a public hearing. So we need to open it up, uh, for the public to comment, and the purpose of this ordinance is to get us in compliance with campaign finance requirements. And we are permitted to do that in our town code without amending our charter through, and our ordinances, and that's what we're proposing the town approve this evening. And we can open it up for public comment if anyone has any.
Nobody here.
Yeah, it went out on the agenda. It doesn't need to be public, put in a paper or anything like that.
A public hearing?
It's not a public hearing.
It's an ordinance, it's a public hearing. It only needs to be posted once it's approved, and we have.
So I think, Ruth, what Trevor is asking is, does Rick need to open it to public hearing for this ordinance to be considered?
Yeah. Did that, and remember last month, we talked about how we don't need to be closing and opening the meeting the way we've been, that we just open the subject matter as a public hearing. And then it, it's not necessary to be doing it the way the town's been doing it. It, it's just an ordinance, it's a public hearing. We ask for comment, and if anyone has any comment, and if it's in fact approved, then we publish the approved ordinance.
Good, okay, I, okay, I just, I think what the confusion is, is that we had a whole agenda line item for a public hearing with the special event liquor licenses. And if the ordinance needed to be included in a public hearing, maybe we should have put that underneath the public hearing heading.
Okay, so the reasons I didn't amend it that way is because your liquor licensing authority is also a separate delegated authority that the town has.
Okay, so they're, they're done two separate.
Yeah, and they have to always be separated out.
Okay, I understand that.
See, and I thought that because this was posted, we were in public hearing, and nobody had any comments, and it was posted.
Right, and I, that's what I was clarifying with her, and but we've been working together, like she said. You guys have been given incorrect information on how to run some of these things that really could be streamlined. You're, there's too many steps and unnecessary motions being made.
That's.
So.
And money. Money being spent on publication.
Yes, and money being spent on other cases are unnecessary, so.
Well, and there's no one here for.
So it's just relearning, you know, all of us are relearning, um, what should have been done correctly, you know, to begin with, and it's nobody's fault.
And although there's nobody here for public hearing, do we stop to open it up for the record?
We have to say it on record.
Yes.
Yeah, you just say, no one's present, and we're gonna close the public hearing. And then you guys can have deliberation and discussion, and then hopefully make a motion to approve.
So we have to have a motion to go into public hearing?
No.
No.
No, we just say there's nobody here for public comment, and then you guys can have discussion about it and vote on it.
Okay, well, I don't think in my thirty-plus years here, and Trevor's, however old Trevor is, we've had a any complaints about campaign finance.
No, but sometimes when you put these things in place, it's showing you're being proactive as elected officials.
Yeah.
That you're, you're acknowledged that these are issues for other municipalities, there are issues other places, and that you're taking a stance that this won't be an issue here.
This is, this is one of those deals, if I understand right, we have to have on our books being compliant with the state of Colorado. That being said, I'm making a motion to approve ordinance one, series twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that. We have a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign? Okay, that took care of that thing. Okay, policy twenty-two zero five six, standards of conduct, B O T, Code of Ethics.
Again, this is one of those things, like we just said. That we acknowledge that there's issues in other municipalities. We read about them every day. This is making it clear that we are committed to giving the best governance that we can to our municipality. And that, um, we're abiding by, um, a set of, um, guidelines and, and gives you guidance as elected officials and appointed officials. This isn't just for your board. You're putting this in place for the planning commission, you're putting this in place for our event planning committee, anybody that is involved in this town in some form or fashion that makes decisions within this, um, municipality.
Oh, and that's for any board after us.
Absolutely.
Richard, yep.
So should there be a signature page?
Not for policies. It needs to be voted in as a policy and added to the, um, policy procedure manual. It's not a resolutional ordinance that requires a signature. But it does reva, require, um, a vote from you all to put it in place. Likewise, if we, um, find a need in the years to come to change some of the verbiage in it, or, um, anything that, it has to come back to the table for another vote for revision.
Amendment.
Motion to approve standards of conduct, number one, two, dash, oh, five, six.
Looks like.
Effective.
Can I just, just talk for a moment about this? I don't know if everyone's had an opportunity to review this memo. But, um, it's one of the best examples I've seen laying out what your standards of conduct are, things that you need to consider, which specifically is on page one. And then on page two, about conflicts of interest, I think they do a good job of explaining, you know, what we kind of experience. For example, with Kiowa Creek Meadows, and where those conflict of interests become so important, and then times where it really doesn't matter. And then, um, also on page three, about confidential information. Town operations, communications, how we communicate with the public and with staff, and amongst yourselves as the Board of Trustees, and, you know, lastly, disciplinary actions for removal, which I think we're gonna begin to talk about later this evening, but, um, so it's a good summary, and I urge you guys to please take the time to review it, and then maybe even keep it handy. We, we'll always have it, but, um, I just think it's really helpful. I know that you're taking the course, I think it's offered by CERSA or CML, I'm not sure which one. Uh, that also outlines your roles and responsibilities, but just that this might be helpful, 'cause sometimes I feel like the bad guy, you know, so. This might be helpful.
Okay, we do have a motion in a second to approve the standards of conduct. Policy twenty-two oh five six. To our discussion.
Right, Trevor gave it first, and Jonathan gave it the second.
Yeah. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Good thing to pursue if you haven't.
Did earlier, too, didn't?
Yeah. Okay, all business.
Yeah.
Wait.
Director Howard has her pin number.
Say it louder.
Director Howard has her pin number.
What?
I have some old business here.
You're.
Um, we discussed all the, um, e- equipment that Josh had looked into.
Did.
And did we table that to this meeting, or?
Well, we tabled it.
Said.
So I think it's, if you want, you guys wanna open that up and discuss that a little bit.
Yeah, 'cause I got kicked out of that last meeting, and I think that was like a kind of roundabout of when.
Uh, so I think where we left the discussion was, we were concerned about the shop truck, and the suggestion was made to take, um, the plow off the, the truck that it was on, take the box out of it, put it with the dump truck.
Right.
Which has happened.
Okay.
So my husband came in town, and he helped Mendez move the plow to the front of the dump truck, move the sandbox to the back of the dump truck.
Good.
Rick was there, too.
The, uh, plow that he put on the dump truck was the one sitting outside.
Oh, it was set outside.
Take the plow off of the other one.
Oh, I misunderstood that.
And we have two plow trucks then.
Okay, so, I mean, he has that one he can drive around in right now. He could, uh, we all discussed and agree that he could take the plow off of that if he wants for a period of time. It's not as if he goes long distances. I understand it's a gas guzzler, because it's a bigger truck.
Right.
Um, but it does have AC and heat. And they've been able to take and modify the dump truck to accommodate the sandbox, so they can use that in the dump truck, you know.
Okay.
That has a plow in the front.
Okay.
So with that said, as we discussed in the last meeting, um, that, and I don't have that information with me right now, but there is one of those Kubota tractors that they felt would be, um, feasible for us, and essentially we'd be putting a half-down payment on it with the money that we brought in from the other equipment, um, and only having to finance half of it.
We brought in that much money?
We brought in twenty-four thousand dollars on the other equipment.
Okay, 'cause I, my notes from last time, it was, one of them was forty-nine thousand, and the other one was fifty-one thousand.
Yeah, so it would be the fifty-one thousand dollar one. I can't, I'll have to go back and look at this, the name of it, but.
It's a Kubota seventy-five.
Seventy-five. Rick also went down there.
The reason we discussed the seventy-five more than the smaller sixty, whatever, was because the sixty series has just come out, and the parts guy and the other parts guy said that they haven't worked all the bugs out of the sixty series yet.
Right, right.
So, um, he suggested the seventy-five, 'cause it's been online longer, and it's a little bigger box. I think that, in my personal opinion, I think it would be two of us to you know, I mean, we, we basically sit on our hands and we don't improve our equipment any, and, you know, Mr. Mendez went down there and did the, did the plows and things, and, uh, you know, so we can get more things done within the town. You know, Mr. Mendez does a heck of a job two days a week. And, uh, too bad we don't have any more, but that's his situation, so, you know, I just think it's something that, um, we wanna upgrade our equipment. Our backhoe was a piece of scrap, our grader was a piece of junk, and our dump truck was a piece of junk. And I mean, for being junk, we cut good money out of that stuff.
Yeah, a lot better, so.
Oh, man.
Yeah.
That blade, what, that blade went for over a thousand dollars.
That second time, yeah.
And it was three hundred the first shot, if you regiment it.
Right.
So, you know, it's something that I think we just, we need to think about, and start upgrading and taking care of business, so that, you know, if we need to go down and break ice, we can break ice. If we need to, whatever we need to do, we have the equipment to do it, and we don't have to call Josh's, uh, brother up there with his.
And let Josh break that. Yeah, well, he has the expertise we need for excavating, if we need the stuff excavated, so I always like clapping him.
And while we're on it, you guys may have discussed it, so if I'm beating a dead horse just in the other room, did we discuss with them lease versus purchase? Are we better to do two-year leases, turn them in and get a new?
So they were.
Contracts and stuff?
They discussed buying it out, right? And one of the draws, um, for that, 'cause he also got a cheaper price, the government, he gave them a lower government rate than what they had given you on the quote.
Yeah.
And the option to, any of the attachments are rentable. So any job we come across, we don't have to buy attachments and keep them sitting there collecting dust. If something comes about that we need a particular attachment.
That was something I liked.
Yes, that was a big draw.
Sean was up there back then, he had said, chances are, since it's with us, and if we let them, you know, use their name or whatever, they can use our name. Chances are a lot of those rentals could just come down as a no fee.
Okay.
And that was, he had said then, whether that changes or not, I don't know, but.
Yeah, I don't, Rick made a conversation with him that.
Well, the good thing is, most of the folks up there had in school, so, you know, not all of them, but, but they're, they're willing to work with us, which I think is a very positive thing, so.
So if you guys, I mean, if you wanna give me direction on it, I'm glad to.
Well, I, I, yeah, I just, I think we should come to some sort of resolutions instead of kicking the can down the road.
Yeah, I agree.
We've been doing it for a while.
Yeah, we, we beat, we beat a dead horse a lot.
Yeah, I think those first tackles that you gave us.
Right.
And, you know, we could have another solution, like we did.
Maybe November, October, or something like.
Art, um, September.
I couldn't even get off my bullwhack then. I got to the end of the privacy fences, I went boom.
It blew my car.
Uh, that's the only reason I brought it up. I, I think we need to go kicking the can down the road and make a decision yes or no.
Yeah, that'd be one thing also.
So my question is, we get this, do we have an operator?
No, now, say that again.
If we get this skid steer, do we have an operator?
Well, I think that our operator in charge would be Mr. Mendez.
I don't think he's an op- an operator and I think he would probably.
They would come down and show us how. It's all, it's all hand operated. It's not there's no pedals on the seventy-five, so.
Just joysticks.
Yeah. It's basically, you're right, two joysticks, so.
You guys don't want me. I'm like running to a car or something.
If we want that, would we finance it through Farmer State or would we?
Through Kubota. Have to talk to their financing officers, let you know something, Trevor, I don't.
Kubota would probably offer better financing.
The whole check with Kubota, sometimes they have a government lending.
I better say Trevor again, talked about that government program.
We got a huge discount on that with that government.
So if we did that, I think there's a lending source with Sourcewell, if I remember right.
Yeah.
The one thing I guess, and you brought up a great point, and I didn't even think about this. Yeah, the one thing about a lease versus us owning it is then we got it in the budget as a fixed expense. And if we got it locked in, it's a fixed expense for the next five years.
I didn't know if it affected.
And this is.
Service contracts and stuff, that's what.
The only reason why that, why that's intriguing to me is cause sometimes, not that I've looked at all the equipment down in the shop, but sometimes there's some things that aren't exactly kept up to par. Or it'd been probably ahead of year four, i- i- and it's and it's no indication of 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 the current situation, but sometimes past history kinda gives you pretty good foresight of what could happen. And so that is, that would be something I'd be curious just to see. Honestly, if 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 it made sense to lease it, say on a four-year deal, the only thing is we don't really know how many hours we'll put on it.
Yeah.
But I mean, loaded to, it's not gonna be a high-hour machine.
Well, as far as I think, we would stay under whatever their minimum is for what we use.
If we put on hundred and fifty hours a year, I'd be, I'd be impressed.
Say, I thought Sean said, and don't hold me to it, but if they had something to do with in most of their lease terms, it was three hundred hours a year max, and I thought there's no way we'd run three hundred hours a year on a machine.
Well, not myself.
That was somebody joyriding around town on it.
I I think that's a really good idea. Shouldn't we have Kim check into it?
I guess before I dropped the hammer on one, I I wouldn't mind seeing the numbers, just. Just so I could say, hey, we made the better, I mean, we looked at all.
And I would think ask if it affects service contracts at all, anything like that, being a lease versus a versus a purchase. I don't know that it does.
Some of those they could write it in.
Yeah, okay, I'll go.
So should we try to get that information and then everybody be able to see it at our next meetings?
That's a good idea. I I just didn't wanna keep us kicking it down. You came up with valid arguments here.
Here's another thing on on that, sorry, is if we get those numbers back, say by end of next week, and if we have to come in quickly for a Tuesday night session to figure this out, I think we should. The other thing.
Yeah, cause March and April is our smoothest month.
Yeah, the other thing I like to throw out is the truck that we no longer use that we remove it from our inventory soon.
Get it off insurance.
And if you need that in the form of a motion, I will make that motion now that we remove that vehicle off of.
Did you get it on the, that auction site you did?
I don't know. I can ask them. I mean, they've managed to get rid of rock we didn't think we can get rid of, so.
Yeah, we didn't pay anything. The people buying pay the fees.
Facebook Marketplace, you could get twenty-five hundred, three thousand out of the.
I don't know, you guys.
But used cars are up. I do that, getting down to break ice, I could barely get up the hill into the off, into the shop. It was missing out so bad. It peel out, miss out, peel out. Like nineteen twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yeah, so what we're gonna do is we're going to, I'll figure out the difference between a lease and a purchase.
Service contract.
Get that information for the next meeting.
Okay.
And I would entertain a motion to allow Kim to put the old F one fifty on whatever auction she wants to put it on and get rid of it. Cause anything we get out of it's gonna be a plus.
We, and we can put the money towards a gas budget, the other one. I mean, the good news is he doesn't go far.
He doesn't.
We have a motion, do we have a second? With Josh second, Terry firsted. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Both same time.
Um really quick, since uh since we're talking about plowing and stuff, I think that Reese's company is doing a great job.
I've gotten a lot of positive feedback. They are all over it. I mean.
No, he stinks up the joint.
Who are we, how are we gonna take care of that back alley and the um roads around around the park down here? Cause this got potholes that'll.
So we can't touch those until, if we keep it in snow and it's full of snow, we can't do anything with them until it's dry out.
Are we gonna have a blade come in or are we gonna use this little Kubota?
We have a, we have a little John Deere with a rock strip around it that does a great job.
Yeah.
It's kinda like fixing a road with the right. We'll have to have. We'll, we'll have.
It may take a few loads of gravel.
I think those big old holes down there by your salon.
Right there at the alley at the. I don't even go that way, cause I give myself a flash.
But somebody did fill them right next to the gas station.
Yeah.
Those are, they're.
Right against the sidewalk that she's talking about. Right to the, this side of the.
If you're going past Mona's and turning past Nordham Park to come down the alley all the way to Town Hall, she's talking about right there in that intersection by the.
Now that's an alley, but those big ones right beside the building are Mona's problem.
If they're on Mona's property, they're Mona's problem, but if there are roadways or are alleyways.
Well, that, I know. But I'm just saying those.
There's holes all over that area.
Like if here's the corner where the salon is, there's a little sidewalk and they're all.
Yeah.
Sidewalk down the side of the building.
Yeah. And that's where everybody pulls in and parks and and that's Mona's problem, cause it's not in the right away, the road, it's not in the road, it's in the
Right.
Her side, so the alley behind is our.
Where the dirt is.
Yeah.
That whole alley.
To wait until. We have a problem there, we have a problem in the alley right here, and we have a problem right there by the liquor store.
And at the school.
And Ted can state highway can fill holes and in two days they're out. Okay, so moving on.
Quickly, I'll tell you what the biggest problem is with those, what causes that in those alleyways and that particular place right there is the big trucks making deliveries to be a restaurant, so. That's, it's been a problem forever, but we can't have them stop on Highway eighty-six and unload off of a highway in front of business.
Wait, for for your, i- it's been a problem since I was a little kid. We didn't even have restaurants down there.
There you go.
Wait, Terry's turn.
I don't know if this goes under old business or discussion. Uh we discussed this at one point before. Why is Tim Craft still on the waterboard?
Ruth, do you wanna enter this conversation?
So I was going to um bring this up at the end of the meeting this evening because it it came to my attention that um you know, we now have um new members on the waterboard effective January first. And they've been doing this conflict of interest disclosures that um we don't do as a matter of course in the town and the Board of Trustees. Um but it it's recorded with what the Department of Revenue.
Oh, the uh Secretary of State.
Secretary.
Before you go on, Ruth.
Yep.
Do we need to discuss this in executive session or can we do it in?
Nope, because I made it aware in open meeting, the last meeting.
Okay, fire away then. I apologize for interrupting.
No problem. So it came to my attention that Tim Craft has not submitted any conflict of interest forms with the Colorado Secretary of State for twenty-six times.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. And I don't know if everyone recalls when we were voiding the development agreement, the issues associated with his eligibility on the board. And um that the entities that signed his eligibility are not a real entity filed with Colorado Secretary of State. And ultimately, the owner of the property what we call Kiowa Creek Meadows submitted a form to essentially make it retroactive that he was a valid member of K W W R.
Ruth, he has, actually has not submitted that. To correct the situation. No ma'am, he he said he would if we asked him to and but no move has been made to correct that designation of representative.
Okay, so I stand corrected. That's even worse. So um the town of Kiowa has the authority when K W W A was established to appoint members of the K W W A. That's almost all the authority we have left. And we can discuss this in more detail under um executive session. I just wanna bring that to the town's attention that if we want to consider it, I need your direction to work on it. And um kind of paper trail where we are and where we've been with that issue. So that would be question one, if the town supports getting clarification on what our rules and responsibilities are, what's transpired with Mr. Craft as a board member of K W W A and if in fact he has violated some of the rules and regulations of being a member. Or if he's even eligible, which I think that's the crux of the issue. And then you know, the next issue that follows that is we decided as a town not to pursue the water well agreement and the water development agreement when we voided the development agreement. And um there may be some basis for me going back and reviewing that, which will not take very much time or effort because um I went to great lengths a year ago doing that. So um I'm looking for direction on both of those matters.
I don't know how everybody else feels. He doesn't live in this town. He doesn't own property in this town. He doesn't have a business in this town. What is he doing sitting on our waterboard?
Let me give some clarification to what Terry's asking and what Ruth is saying, those of you that weren't at the last water meeting, okay? Of twenty-seven meetings that the water attorneys have filed conflict of interest forms with the state, they have only filed them for four members, not to include Tim Craft. Twenty-seven meetings continuously arguing with them about why they need it. And not once has anybody divulged to me that Tim Craft never submitted a conflict of interest form like the rest of the board has. There's no reasoning why he has it. There's no reasoning why his has not been filed with everybody else on that board. There's also been discussion, just so you're all aware. Tim Craft tried to make a move for the water because he felt he found a loophole in the water rights transfer. And he was conferring with attorneys to try to get his hands on our water. Okay? So this isn't a minor thing. And Ruth has been quiet for a while now because you guys wanted her that way. You didn't want to discuss it. There was a lot of animosity over bringing it up. And these are the things that have transpired since Ruth has kept her mouth shut and has let it go. So you have decisions you've gotta make. I don't care how they feel about him. He is a threat to your town. He is a threat to your water. I can't do anything with it without direction. She can't do anything without direction. So.
Prior to tonight. I mean, ever since we got rid of the um uh development agreement, he shouldn't be on the board, just my opinion.
And they've got a water agreement right now in place that I was told to my face they plan on holding on to and keeping. If development comes back in here, if it's Tim Craft, they are hang- hanging on to that water well agreement. And right now, as that water well agreement stands, it's as screwed up as your development agreement was. He does not have to pay one tap fee. One tap fee, you're talking six and a half million dollars in tap fees that they are telling him he doesn't have to pay.
Who's telling him?
It's in the water well agreement. That's what they negotiated.
I'm sorry, I'm new.
Oh, I know. I'm just saying, yeah, absolutely. But we've got infrastructure that is breaking everywhere all over town because it's so old. And that's what those tap fees do. They pay to repair that infrastructure. They pay, you know, to put in new developments. You know, if if he put in new development tomorrow and we needed to put five hundred homes in with five hundred meters, if he's not paying a tap fee, you're, they're, the water authorities foot that bill for every one of those meters. He's not paying for the meters.
Well, say digging needs to be done, then we need to do it. I my point of view is when we all backed away and let off was when it was legally told that's what to do. So that's what we all said to do. Let's all back away. Let's let this fester out, blow up, blow away, whatever. And now, now there's a a new problem, a different problem that needs to be investigated, so it needs to be.
I just don't, I mean, I I just think we need to move forward with the information that has come available to us, that's public record filed with Colorado Secretary of State. And the fact that Mr. Craft's eligibility on the board is at question. So if the town would like me to investigate that, um you just need to give me direction. And then with respect to I mean, all the work's done on the water well agreement and you know, my legal opinion, my analysis, all of it, all that work's done. So it's easy to bring forward again and bring up for discussion that would occur in executive session and um the eligibility probably will be considered in executive session and then we can move forward on the record.
I I got. Questions.
I can't speak to I'm not at liberty to speak to individual temperament on him.
On the waterboard?
Yeah.
I didn't know we had any right to dictate their board members.
We do.
Well, so that's.
We approve them. We do have, that was written into the agreement from the U S E A.
Wouldn't we annually do that?
We do it when they have elections.
And this is why, I, this is why I ask.
Go on at elections.
So in in a sense, the water board is somewhat similar but different than the fair board. I mean, we are a a in a sense, we're governing body, one part of the Felbert County Government for eight days or whatever it is. But every year we have, we have to, as a fair board, we have to submit a report. And it has to be turned in by the end of December. Or by mid-December, that report has to be turned in. And then in the January meeting, they go and they approve all the boards, so they approve the planning commission board, it's the fair board on down the line. So I think maybe, and I don't know what we gotta do on our end, but I think it would be in our best interest to figure out. But I think it would be in our best interest to figure out how to put that same deal that every year we re- re- approve all boards. And maybe we put it in our February meeting. But, but this is why, because new officers are typically sworn in in January. And then you go with the fair or with the county, it's the month or the meeting after the, the swearing in process, then they, then they go through and they review those boards. We probably need to have that somewhere in our, in our town charter, whatever.
We do.
For everybody with, with the date, with the annual, this is what happens.
When you talk about a review, are you talking about compliance with the town charter or the code uh, for each one of those boards? Because, because our charter right now dictates um, how our board is put in place. And their board is approved. So when we did the transfer from the town to the water authority, that document there that put them in place dictated how their board was formed and dictated the fact that that's the one thing that keeps you guys connected. You guys give the approval of who they're asking to bring on their board. So that's really not something anybody can change because that was put in place by the federal government. Your board was, you know, how you guys handle your board and construct your board is put in place by your charter. That can only be changed by ordinance. The planning commission, I believe, was by code. So that can be changed by ordinance. But we can't, it's kind of like our operating agreement. We can't, as a board for the town, we can't just change how we do business with, with them or set requirements for their board without them being part of that, you know, without the federal government approving that. Because in order for them to exist, these were the specifications that were put in place.
Okay.
For them.
So let me ask this question. Oh, and, and there's a couple. I mean, my God, a conflict of interest, twenty-five hundred dollars on the annual event is a conflict of interest with a large development. Add a couple more commas and zeros, and how is that not a conflict of interest? One, how does this fall in line with what the government stipulations are? Two. And the only reason why I want to know is if you go, well, here, right here, what the government stipulations are, it says you have to have X and we're not getting it, then it's a, and it's black and white like that, then fine. So where are, I guess, because this was the first year I had the the conflict of interest that we filled out.
Remember, we did it because they did it. You know, they, they started it. Their attorney said, this is the way, something else too. Their, their attorney said, all of a sudden, we should have been doing this from the very beginning. And we're talking like a decade, okay?
Yeah.
And, but we weren't, okay? Great. You weren't doing it. So I'm like, I went to Ruth, I'm like, Ruth, is this, should we be doing this? If his, if their attorney's saying that they should have been doing this for over a decade and they haven't been doing it, and they're just now getting caught up and they're doing what they should be doing according to the state, and Ruth's like, I have no idea what you're talking about. I go to the county attorney. He has no idea what I'm talking about. I go Elizabeth. They have no idea what I'm talking about. Those three entities that have no idea what I'm talking about as far as being under requirement to file conflict of interest form with the state. So we went ahead and did it because again, like these policies and these ordinances on ethics, it's good to have in place. It shows we're being proactive, that we're committed to good governance and we're committed to doing what's right for your, your town. So we did it. And we put it on a file and we trust that when we're in a situation that each one of you will step up and say, I'm sorry, I can't make a vote because I have a conflict. You've done it already. You know, that's what's put on you. And if we find out later on that you had a conflict, that you didn't divulge, well, that's where that policy comes in place. And that's where Ruth starts stepping in. That is the, the guideline for why it was done. But it wasn't done correctly. They're in violation of their own.
So it's kind of hard for me to ask because we probably don't know. But if that's the case and it's brought by their attorney, why is there no action on them, on their side?
That's an interesting question. That's gone through my head many, many times. Many, many times because you get no answer from them.
From the board or from the?
The attorney.
So let's start there.
I can't, I can't arbitrarily call their attorney and have a conversation with him. That's a charge to the board, I mean, to the water authority, and I can't do that on something that is of interest to you.
Say that again?
I cannot call their water attorney and ask questions about why they operate the way they do or why he has not said anything about this lack of a conflict of interest form being filed on his part. Because I am causing charges toward the water authority for your personal interest.
Attorney bills them for all the questions.
Oh, gotcha.
So can we have the water authority? Do we have them come in and account for everything that they're doing to us?
They're their own authority.
They're their authority.
That's the place we're in. And we're in that place because of people that came before you.
So, no.
I think we need to limit the I mean, ultimately, we can have a joint work session. Again, I don't know how many of you recall how contentious that meeting was, but I, well, probably will never forget that. In any event, so I, I'm not trying to seek more acrimony than there already is, but I believe that this is an issue that the town should visit and figure out what our roles and responsibilities and our authority is. And then we can go from there.
Terry's got one. We need to go, Terry.
Based on the information we received today, Bronk Kemp, based on the fact that he was put on the water board because he was representing special metro districts, which do not exist now because we no longer have that development agreement. I feel Ruth should check in to see how we get him off that board. My opinion only.
Well, it really is kind of easy because as if you don't, you don't know, but the designation of representative form that should have been filled out. Say you don't live in town, okay, but somebody else does. And they don't want to serve on the board, but you have an interested servant on the board. They can do a designated designation of representative where they're assigning you as their representative to serve on this board, okay? The owner of that property should have been the person that filled out that form, assigning that developer as the representative for them because not because he lives in town, but because he owns the property in the town. So you could own property or live in the town to qualify for.
Or own a business.
Or own a business. So, for the water board. So that developer himself assigned one entity of his to be the designator of the other entity of his. At no point did the property owner fill that form out themselves. Now, in, they are willing to retroactively correct that form now. And turn it in, but it's not legal because you appointed him under the designated designation of representative form that was submitted already. So essentially, you would have to go back to the same process. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ruth. You would have to go through the same process, have to come back before you to approve a corrected form for him to stay on that board.
And Jim, Jim Digby already said that that's, he would do that?
He already said, he wants rid of that, that. So he's fine with doing the form again. But you still have to approve it a second time.
So he's sitting on the board pretty much illegally anyway.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
How did the water board approve him on the board without that form?
The form was not, it wasn't paid attention to correctly. They didn't, they just saw that he was being assigned as the representative and then saw, see who was assigning him, didn't see it was a craft company LLC, assign another craft company.
Well, presumably the town did that.
I see who all approved that. Was that something?
Well, it wasn't necess, well, it did.
Yes, it did. Because I voted no that he shouldn't be on the board.
I think it slipped through.
Yeah.
Sure did.
So why is there not something that we can say, hey, this is not legal, therefore you have no right to be on the.
That's what Ruth is saying. And she's asking for your guidance and for your direction.
I say go for it.
To pursue that.
Yeah, definitely.
And that's what I said a minute ago. If it's something Ruth, you think we need to get on top of and get tucked away, get at it.
Yep. Now, is the only reason that we, you know, like the treading lightly thing is just because our gap between the two boards are starting to mend better and we don't want to ruffle feathers type of thing?
That was the thing at the moment. When we backed off, it was when we had finished talking about negotiating the operating agreement, tensions were high already with that situation. And it was better to back off and let things cool down some.
Okay, so now I'm going to fire it back up. Okay, so we had an agreement with Kraft and Company to do with their thing. Water had an agreement. How do we get rid of that agreement that they think is so important to keep in place?
Ruth?
That's what, that's what I want to bring back to you.
I have a question.
Wait a minute, I want to hear an answer. What'd she say?
Go ahead, Ruth.
That's what I want to bring back to you for discussion.
So. So later on, you're going to bring that back and talk about it?
At the next meeting.
Okay.
Unless you want to talk about it sooner.
Question, Jonathan?
So my question is, although in our agenda for tonight is there's no executive session in there, can we? On, upon new light of what's going on, can we go into the executive session?
Now, we have a push executive session prior to having the meeting. So people know that we're having an executive session and what we're having before is statutory law.
Well, and can we put something as far as the executive session coming sooner than our March meeting to discuss this and the equipment?
Legal advice.
We can have.
Session to adjust through the equipment. This is, this is legally.
Hold on. What she's saying is can we just set up a second meeting?
Oh, we could.
Session and take care of the equipment. We do it on one night, one sweep.
I like that idea.
Thank you.
I am not available any night next week. I've got training up in Golden.
So Tuesday night to twenty-seventh. That gives you two weeks.
Can we do the twenty-seventh? That's our community meeting.
Yeah.
Thursday, can we do the twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth?
Twenty-ninth is a virtual community meeting.
Do Monday, no.
I'll just be honest, Mondays, mailman, I won't be here.
I'll be here.
On Mondays, I don't get done till after seven P M.
That's, I mean.
I got one for you, but I'll share it up here. I just.
So let's go Friday. We've got Wednesday and Friday.
Friday, the.
I'll come Monday.
First.
I can't be here Friday. I'm sorry. I made plans on the days off, so I can't be here Friday.
Um, well, what, what is the best day that everybody is mostly available?
So. Are you on Jenny? Other than next week? I'm, I'm in training.
Wednesday, the twenty-eighth. So we'll have the fairground thing for the open house, community open house, the last one on twenty-seventh. Twenty-ninth, we have a virtual one. So that leaves the twenty-eighth and the twenty-sixth for that, that week. If you guys want to do that on Monday or Wednesday.
I could, I could get, so I might be on, online, but I mean.
Then that first week of March. Hold on, let me confirm. I don't want to give you a wrongless information.
I, I'm speaking for myself. I would feel better patching stuff up like as far as uh, the Tim Kraft situation goes before our next meeting.
Yeah. So we have that first week of March open. There's nothing the first week of March. So we can actually have a meeting the first week of March before our board meeting the next week.
Yeah.
Worked for me, Karen.
That needs to be.
I'm all right that first week of March.
Everybody okay that first week of March?
Yeah, you want to do it on Tuesday?
Monday? Be through Thursday at all, Trevor?
Josh? What do you got?
I'm hoping, like I said, Mondays would just be, I'd be tight to even make a seven.
Okay, then first Tuesday of March.
The second?
What did you say?
So, I mean, we could do Zoom to Josh and Trevor if that helps you guys.
I just maybe set my side of weed mire at that point. That's what I'm saying. I, it's me getting back in from thirty miles on.
Oh, okay. Okay.
That's my issue. And, and I may, it may be a light day. I should call you at three and say, hey, I'm done. I.
We don't know.
Mondays are just my crap.
Are you guys okay for kids' days?
Tuesday.
A Tuesday.
Yeah.
Sounds like. Tuesday, we're. Days are, I mean, Mondays suck for me or.
I think this is important enough that this is seriously important.
So should we plan seven o'clock on the fifth?
That just needs to be all retired. Sure.
To what?
Make a motion?
I'll figure out what state I'm in.
March fifth, seven o'clock?
I work. Jonathan? Yes. Okay with me?
Well, that's our usual meeting, right? Oh, no, our usual is the twelfth.
Just the second. Seven P M.
So you got, uh, till the fifth to get all the ducks lined up on this.
And then I just said throw in the equipment thing like what Trevor said so that we can.
Yeah, I think Rick has just explained it. I think you thought, and he had all need to be under executive session, but it doesn't.
That's what I heard.
We would just have a, we call it a, so anything outside of the regular monthly meeting is called a special meeting. So we would just put that on like a regular agenda item, the equipment, and then have an executive session for the rest of it. We, we just have to make sure that executive sessions have to be noticed twenty-four hours in advance.
Yeah, that is why.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
No, with the circumstances of that executive session.
I get it.
We need to. Representative for the attorney for the water board president.
I would, no, no. Because it's not negotiation with them. It has nothing to do with who they agree with.
Yeah, we can let you.
He's aware of the situation and has been since he's been on the board, but he's chosen the circumstance of not doing anything about it. And that's why Ruth wants to talk.
Right. That's what becomes an issue for me. Once you know it's a problem and you choose not to comply, now you're.
I, I think we should take that step as, as a collective to to, um, face it and say, you know, when I would be with you, trying to figure out why.
Remember our first meeting, babe?
What?
Remember our first meeting?
I tried to forget. Ruth, did you have anything else you want?
Anything else, Ruth?
So, this time.
Are you good with that March fifth, seven?
Uh, that works. It's fine.
Okay.
Um, any communication?
No.
Motion to adjourn. Second?
Hey, we didn't get the town code.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, we did.
We moved.
Oh, the code update stuff that she sent you guys. So Ruth, really, so the only feedback I've gotten so far is from Terry. I really need you guys to look at that, give feedback to that because Ruth would like to come to the next meeting with ordinances in place to put what you're reviewing now in place. And then we'll send you the second. This is going to be a three parts. So she wants to send you the second part to start reviewing. That's why you need to get through this part. Do what? Some mini-series, three-part mini-series. That is separate from the code updates.
Are we allowed to?
I didn't get my. Talk with each other about like, can you all go down to Patty Anne's, sit at a table together and talk? No, you cannot. You can have a discussion with Trevor.
It'll be quick before you cut my hair.
Yep. You can, you two can talk. You two can talk. You two can talk, but you cannot talk more than.
Right, okay. Just, just making sure. I mean, I'll be honest, when I opened it up, the first thing I saw highlighted was that adult stuff. And I'm like, what am I, rebeg?
Oh, well, that's in our code, so.
I was very taken back at first, like, I'm sorry, what?
Yeah, I just keep in mind, that was put in place a long time ago. So that was in consideration a long time ago before we were even part of this town.
You have to have that code provision or it opens up the door constitutionally for somebody to come and apply for a sexually oriented business. constitutionally for somebody to come and apply for a sexually oriented business.
And we still have.
It's kind of like our Airbnb's. If people have Airbnb's right now, we can't do anything about it because we have nothing in place keeping them from doing it.
Right.
So it's the same concept.
Anything else from the board? All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 Who was my second? Who was my second to adjourning? Terry was first, and you're second. All right.
I will be able to be at the, uh, planning commission meeting next week. I'll be in.